I'm in the call meeting to order at six thirty. You roll call. All right, so. Gus Robinson.
Here.
Katie Adams.
Here.
Karen Primal.
Here.
Carlos Sainz.
Here.
And Amelia is here. You may stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If I don't want to. I'm going to agenda approval.
Yes, 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 yes.
Move to approve the tonight's agenda. Second. There's a motion and a second to approve the agenda. Any objections? The agenda is approved. Going to move on to item two A. What? Oh, that's in the.
I'll get to that. He's in the band, yeah, so.
Um, couple comments, so visitors can speak on any non-agenda item at this time. Uh, do I have anybody here who wants to? Oh, yes, but anyone in the audience also, I think I have, okay, we'll go, we'll go, okay. Uh, and you can state your name, address. Oh, and it's here. You are a main wave.
Wayne Martin, seventy-two, seventy-five, North Wall, Washington.
Okay.
There, Wisconsin.
Welcome.
And so. One thing I was wanting to make comment of, I know Nikle has a monthly expense report that each month though, they'll be this, all of the payments that will be made for Nikle services and us taking a look at her website and it looks like you had something similar, but not the same thing in February. This is, this I would appreciate if you all could have a monthly expense report. I like looking at that and I'm sure that would save you some hassle of people saying you didn't. You're going to get yourself. And then second. Thing I have, you know, for. Board policy zero, one-sixty-seven point three, public participation. Plus it's a collect and intentionally they might want to find large groups to prevent me from taking one of my friends here and talk for thirty minutes. Then. Three AM or. Other agenda items that you all have is public comment allowed at specific for each agenda item for that agenda item?
Yes, so the, the public participation policy you're talking to, I think outlines that. Uh, pretty sure it does. You may speak after a presentation and before a board deliberates or votes on the agenda item. And that is one of the policies that we are still, that will still be coming down the line to revamp and add it as we do the, the policy work right now, so. That is a great, um, point. And just quickly, your monthly expense, you totally agree. You look forward to having a regular monthly expenses report again. We're sort of figuring out what it's going to look like. But those are all things. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rob?
Hi, Robert Primal, seventy-five. Seventy-five thirty North Apple Lane. Um, actually stole my thunder. I was also going to comment that the monthly proceeds report has been missing for a while now. And just want to point out, it's, the reason why schools do it is because it's actually required by statute. To, uh, make a detailed record of all receipts and expenditures available in the public inspection at each school board meeting, so. Um, I don't know if it's just not getting, you're voting on it, I think usually, so I don't know if it's just not going to attach to public agenda like it used to or what's wrong with it, but.
Can I please share that?
Sure.
Um, yeah, I think there were a couple mishaps where it was not posted publicly, but also some of that information has not, like, been confirmed, is sort of my understanding, like, as we wait for that, right? Like, it's, or maybe Gus, do you want to speak to that? Because we've been asking for monthly expense reports too.
And we. Attempting to do monthly expense reports, the question became, uh, we looked at monthly expense reports in relation to budget, the question had been raised, it's how I think was the budget to be able to make a comparison. Uh, to them, uh, and now that we've gotten that straight, now it will, again, it's going to be something I'd be looking forward that, yes, we, I understand what the statute did, we will give that in a meaningful form, right? In the last couple of months, we could have put it out, but it wasn't going to be. No one was really going to understand what it meant.
Proud of though, thank you. Um.
Thank you, um, Anna Young, um, principal at Glen Hills Middle School. Um, I just wanted to take a moment and, um, honor some of the work that our PTO did this past week to celebrate our teachers for Teacher Appreciation Week. Um, we're super proud of our educators in our district and, um, during Teacher Appreciation Week, the PTO planned, um, several different items of uh, special lunches and ice cream sundae bar for our staff, as well as bringing in, um, treats for them on a daily basis, so they had something special to look forward to every single day. Um, in addition to that, they provided an amazing raffle that our teachers could enter, and so there were prizes given away to teachers throughout the week. And then in addition, um, students also participated in spirit days where they did different things to honor their teachers, such as wearing their teacher's favorite color, just as a way to kind of give tribute to them. In addition, the, um, administrative team worked collaboratively with, um, each other to go out and um, send a message out to our caregivers so that they could provide messages of support to our teachers. And we stopped in the schools and talked to students who had really profound things to say about the educators and the influences that they made on their lives, and we had the opportunity to share a thirteen-minute video that I think included just about every single staff member, paraprofessionals and teachers, and a lot of our work went into that, and it was wonderful and touching and moving to see that on Friday during our PD day. So I just wanted to give a shout out to Teacher Appreciation Week and to everybody who helped make it special for our educators. Thank you.
Good for sharing that. Um, any other public comments? Non-agenda items? Oh, right. Well, that will move on to item three A, which actually, um, as it is in the bailout. So our student representative had a conflict for tonight and will appear at our June fourth, what's it called? Our June fourth meeting. Um, Steve the last. I mean. Okay, uh, we have Steve LaValley, is that what you said?
Yes.
LaValley, who is here to talk us through, um, some of the things Neola has done for us, kind of do for us. Um, answer any forward questions. He does have a presentation. I'm not sure, I know. Kind of wondering as new board members, if you guys would like to get some background on Neola and like what they do of that, or if you want to move right into the specific, specific work that they're doing with us. Um, welcome, you guys.
I've done a little bit of reading.
I, I read the slides here, so.
Okay.
I, I kind of know what the overall history is. I'm curious about the history specifically with art history.
Okay, good, perfect. That's sort of.
I think, uh, just by way of that little bit of background, I've been with, uh, Ne- uh, Neola for about ten years now. Uh, retired, having been superintendent for the last thirteen at the Adams Frontiers School District, as director of pupil services before that, and school psychologist prior to that, actually from Milwaukee originally, so. Uh, and Gus, I know Gus was in C-Sup five, was also a Neola client at Hardyville, so I'll let him give this thought. Uh, where we are with Glen Hill River Hills, it was probably, um, maybe six months, I, I, six months to nine months ago. Allison and Danielle and I met and, and what could Neola do to help streamline the process? And the goal was to update the policy in its entirety. Uh, when we looked at it, a number of the policies, for whatever reason, had not been reviewed or updated for a number of years. And so, uh, it was decided that we would go with Neola, with myself, working with Allison and we saw them updates. Uh, we, there are, uh, uh, nine sections, who actually ten with the board bylaws section. We've updated half of those already. Uh, Allison and I have, uh, three other sections ready for you, and she and I are meeting next Tuesday to do the final two. And so, we will have the entire draft policy book before the board for the two June board meetings. You'll have an opportunity then to review the policies, make suggestions, recommendations, ask questions, uh, and then there'll be a formal adoption, I'm assuming, at that second meeting in June, at which time the policy book will have been completely updated using the Neola model policies as well as input and language from the book. So. And then in, in this, and this is probably the key point, I think Gus would agree, is, is the update process. At least twice a year, we will, we, we're, we're watching what's going on at the federal level with regard to law, rules, court rulings, uh, at the state level with regard to legislation. And then we're getting input, we're in three hundred and thirty-six school districts, about seventy-five percent of the, of the state. And we're always getting input from, from board members as well, uh, other boards as well. In fact, uh, when we reviewed the wellness policy, there was a question about the use of the term childhood obesity, which we, I actually brought that forward then, and we did a, a review of that, and you'll see, you'll, that would be not for you, but for other districts, a change that we would, we would suggest. So that's the other way that we get input from, and with regard to the revisions.
So it was good trouble. We made good trouble.
Good trouble. Several others who made good trouble as well. Um, the one, and, and in addition to the two regulars updates, once in a while, there'll be a special update, and that's, the updates usually come out May, June, and then December, January, but there's times we can't wait. And what's going on right now at the federal level is a very good example. The Title One, Title Nine regulations have been updated, unofficially released, they go into effect August first, which means your policy needs to be updated, and we will have a special update out. I will work with Allison to get that to the board so that that policy will be in place. I think, the, so like, it goes into effect August first, but I think it's an August twenty-fourth, excuse me, implementation date, so we'll be sure to have that adopted by then, but that's a real good, the regulations, when we did the original, uh, four years ago, and they, they're over two thousand pages. And so we have, uh, national law firm agrees for things like that. Within Wisconsin, everything you see from us has been vetted or approved by either Reading Lewis and Lacy or what was Davidson Kiltow is now Amis and Davis. So, uh, and that's part of, part of the, what I think makes boards more comfortable is knowing that this has been legally vetted prior to you, to you seeing it, doesn't make it on, doesn't mean you don't have the opportunity to make revisions, so thank once in a while, boards will want to make a revision, and I'll say, well, you can do that, I'm not sure it's legal, but you check with your legal counsel if you want to make that. We will defend and warrant our language, but if you stray from that too far, then, then we, so, so right now, we're on track to have everything ready for the board for their two June meetings, get that done next Tuesday. All right. Uh, and then, once they're adopted, everything will be cleaned up. I'll, I mentioned to Carl, we'll have an adoption resolution that basically says, these are our policies, everything else is rescinded from this day forward, and then we're really in the update process after. But it doesn't mean you can't make revisions to any policies along with them. And they're your policies, they're not our, they're not our policy. They're our policy, but they're really our policies. Or we have districts that have district-specific policies, um, you know, probably not applicable here, but we added a policy on, on hunting in school forests. And so it's an example of a very specific policy that might, probably not down here, but uh, central northern Wisconsin, probably. Are there general questions for me before I jump into the update?
Uh, yes, well, actually, not general, so maybe talk about that.
Can you jump to board docs?
Sure. Sorry, got to bring it up here real quick.
You guys have seen this in for Dr. Two, I guess he's going.
So you're in board docs and you've been here in draft.
What I'm going to do.
Folder Neola templates for processing. And within that folder. Within that book.
Yep, sorry, just one second, I'm going to not, I'm going to mirror what I'm doing so I can control it here.
There's Neola, Neola for Processing and Neola for Policy.
Yeah, there's a folder that says, update, volume thirty-three, number one, board review.
Mm-hmm.
Do we update? Just.
And it should start with, um.
I think it doesn't always show.
Sorry, just a second.
I have to make it relog it.
The ghost in the machine that logs us out randomly. Has landed.
There it is. Obviously, it's draft. You know, it's just, I'm doing the processing, and then all the way down, up, shape, volume thirty-three, number one, report review, okay? Almost.
Orange and smile, that is the next thing to do.
Yeah, anyone not having? Do you mind if I? No. And don't make fun of my.
But it's a teacher. Four hundred of them. Thanks for being patient with me.
Yeah, we're illustrated. Now, that's one of my questions, though, do you guys offer any kind of, like, board docs tutorials for board members, or is that, you were just talking about, oh, like, board docs for dummies? Yeah, kinda, I mean.
Yeah, uh, we have a, a trainer.
Oh.
Who could zoom in.
Oh, okay.
Ken St. James's, and, and any specifics that you want included.
Oh.
Uh, he can.
Okay.
He can walk us through those, so yes.
All right.
I'll, I know you have a lot to do. Uh, every time we do, uh, update, there'll be an overview, and the overview will, uh, describe, we'll have a listing of each of the policies, and then the reasons why we're suggesting the revisions. You'll also notice there's two legal alerts in there. If you could click number three, there's a requirement that districts on your website list your local office public holders. So that legal alert sort of, sort of walks you through that requirement, and way at the bottom of that document, I think I created for you the actual statement that should go on your website. Actually, so by, by statute, all board members, superintendent, any directors, principals are considered local public office holders. It's really around the idea of public reference. So that's, that's the legal alert behind it. We're going to jump a little bit down to policy, I think it's eighty-three-ten, which is in the update folder. And you can see where are we at? This is your public records policy, and if you scroll down a little bit, you'll see the language actually has been added. So, here's the legal alert that explains it, here's the language in your policy that says, including providing the notice required per statute about your local public office holders. Okay? Questions on that? We're going to jump back to the, I think it's number four, uh, at the top. Yeah, and so. This, this is another legal alert. This was a seventh, uh, Seventh Circuit Court of Appeals ruling. The question was around, do you, are you required to pay staff members for leave when they're on military? And the court didn't say yes or no. What the court said was, whatever you're doing in this, on, on this hand over here, you need to do for military leave, so let's talk about jury duty. If I'm a staff member and I go, now I'm required to go for jury duty, if I'm paid, and the requirement is simply that I give you back what I received, which is your, your hand, your policy, then that's what we're going to do for military. So if we scroll down a little bit to policy, uh, thirty-four thirty-one, so this is your policy on employee leaves, on bereavement, on jury milit- uh, military leave, and then jury duty, and then a number of other leaves that are in statute. But the green, if we could scroll back up a little bit, the drafting note explains the legal standard, and then we added the language so that, that is consistent with what you're doing with jury duty. So absences or militarily covered by, uh, shall be paid, but any compensation received under this will be returned to the district, so that the policy language is consistent with that court ruling based on what you're doing in particular, jury.
Thank you.
So I understand you're talking about the legal findings, but doesn't that put a burden on the district pretty significantly about keeping that information in those monies?
I, I didn't, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
It sounds like the finding puts a pretty solid burden on the district to get those monies, like. That, I know, I know you're just talking to the legal binding, but.
Yeah. So. Um, you're talking about the milit- if somebody goes on a mil- on a military leave, um, what some districts have done, and I'm, I'm not a lawyer, is they've put some restrictions on the number of days, but they've made that consistent with what they're doing for jury. Because, and part of the question that's come up in other districts, well, maybe, I don't know, am I getting more for military pay than I would be for?
Right.
My, yeah, I don't know that, so. We're, we're trying to fit the policy to the legal, the legal ruling, but you, you know, that might be something, you know, business manager or somebody wants to dig in a little deeper. I don't know how, that's happened very often, that somebody's gone for military leave. I think we had one, two in my thirty years. Uh, so then, what, there's other policies within this folder that have additional, um, if you go to old, old one, old one forty-four point three, this is board member quote of ethics and conflict of interest, way at the bottom, there were two statutes. Uh, these are specific to the state of Wisconsin. Uh, and it starts off by saying, no member, member of the board can be paid, can have a paid position with the district. However, there's legislation passed that board members could be a volunteer coach, supervisor of a core curricular activities, or a volunteer bus driver.
That's right.
Uh. So those, the other two rulings, or the, one ruling was the Seventh Circuit Court of Appeals, here's a couple, a couple of state statutes. If we go to whistlebore protection, uh, thirty-two eleven, sometimes we make technical changes, and you'll have the opportunity when you review the board bylaws section to say, we give the superintendent the authority to approve technical corrections with bypassing the normal rulemaking process of two, two readings, because there, a statute may have been changed, or a statute may have been removed, or we may have, you know, changed staff member to employees to be consistent with other policies. There's that substantive change. The policy language says the superintendent is going to approve those, but inform the board. Uh, and then the only other one in there, I think we haven't talked about, is sixty-three twenty-five. This is federal language. So this is buying things using federal money, and I don't believe the district did, maybe the, uh, districts that were using any of the ESER or other federal monies from COVID. DPI was saying, if you were going to spend that money, you had to have a reference in policy to Ba- Bacon Davis prevailing wage requirement, so there it is. Uh, and then, there's two, sixty-six-ten and sixty-six-eleven are references to non-district-supported student activity accounts, GASB eighty-four, Gus, you can have added on GASB eighty-four, um. We just clean both the non-district-supported, this, these are student activity accounts where the district's not, they're on your books, but the district's not providing any support. It's a rare occurrence, but in, in some places it's happened, and the second one is district-supported, uh, student activity accounts. So this, this is the brief version of this update, because some of the policies that were in the update, we had reviewed, yes, we just made those part of that overall. So, but this again is a short look at what we will do twice a year, and it can be done with the superintendent and the associate, or with the associate, it's up to you. Uh, I will note, probably starting July first, or shortly thereafter, you'll have a new representative. That'll be John Thompson, who's retiring from Whitefish Bay.
Where are you from?
I'm, I'm.
Way from us.
I've gone from about sixty districts out to ten or eleven, I mean, just.
Yeah.
Uh, time to sort of just sit in the chair.
Sorry, can you clarify? So this update will come to us twice a year, but you're saying it could just go to the superintendent and they?
Or review. Meaning.
They would review, and then it would.
Then it would come to you, meaning that I would meet with the superintendent and, and explain everything, okay? Here's this legal alert, and then the superintendent would bring it to you.
Okay, that was going to be my question, is what is the most common practice that you see out there?
Most common is to meet with the superintendent, um, and it, but it's, that depends on the board, I, uh, you know, kind of hey, I meet, I meet with the superintendent and one board member who reports back to the board. You know, it's, uh, it's just a mix, so really, uh, we'll do whatever you want.
Yeah, and, yeah, go ahead. The, uh, this idea of the superintendent being able to make technical corrections without having two readings. Do you do that in a policy? Is that what we would do, adopt the policy that allows that?
Yes.
One of those coming around.
Your, your, your policy on my, your policy on pillos and policy will have a section on technical corrections.
Okay.
That's a pretty, and that really was board saying those, why are you, why are we going through these two readings for the?
Yeah.
Because of statute, that.
Right.
And you're telling us about it anyway, so.
Right. Um. So I think you understand, so our, our ideal was to have all of these new policies sort of uh, approved in June, so we know, you know, for liability reasons and for all, and all other kinds of reasons, um, we have this universal policy that exists in this one place. But we also wanted to be able to go back to them in some method, way, shape, or form to, to hone in on some that maybe we've marked, or, or somewhere we want to maybe see if we could make them more district-specific, more reflective of our like lens or values.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and so I, like, when we do that, or if we want to, like you said, create a new policy, like, how does this relationship, um, continue, like, as we go back and tweak, do we do that ourselves and then send it to you, and you say, hey, this is still within our realm, or we have some advice, or do we work with you, that, that input on that, or?
Both.
Okay, it's open, flexible.
If, if, some, districts a lot of times will tell me, we want to look at such and such, there's a process to duplicate your active policy, which moves it to draft.
Okay.
And then there's another process where you can mark it up however you like.
Okay.
And some will say, can you take a look at this? Or they might say, do you have any other districts that have policy language such as?
Okay.
Um, a common one was around equity.
Right.
And so we had a couple different examples for equity policies, but, um.
So we collaborate, is it? We can kind of figure it out.
Yes, we can.
Okay.
Um, and then, I, I have the ability to meta-search every board doc's district's policy for any.
I'd like to add.
Any specific policy.
Okay.
So if you type in school forests, you'll find three or four examples of school forests.
Okay. Can I ask a question about office roles, or did you have that? Oh.
So, one of the things that, um, there are just particular things in my life that I would like to be representative of the reality, not the tradition. And we've noticed that there seems to be a tradition of using the state language, the legislative language, to define the board roles.
Board officers.
Board officers, but it's inconsistent with the actual practice of the district. So then, I've, I've been wondering, is it possible to customize our descriptions so that the public understands, like, this is what the president really does, this is what the treasurer and the clerk truly do.
Yeah. Um, and actually, in the, the zero section, your board bylaw section that Allison just approved, we have, we have definitions for board president, vice president, and they're going to match the statute.
Right.
But in that, that's where you would also say, in addition to these duties as specified in statute, the board president also, and you can elaborate there, however you would like to do that, but it's going to be, again, specific to you. Probably the most common example is the statute would sort of assume that the treasurer or the, or the clerk's taking all the minutes, and, and in reality, somebody else is doing that.
Right.
And the clerk's reviewing them and probably signing them, and the po- the policy line would, would state. And the clerk's reviewing them and probably signing them, and the po- the policy line would state it.
So, so I think the question though is that, right now, if you look at them, the treasurer, for example, says, I apply, receive and sue for all money. I enter into the account books, all money received, so clearly our treasurer does not do that.
Is that, is that your current?
This is yours, but I'm looking at the zeros and the.
Oh, that's your. Does it say though that, or, or with the assistance of?
Nope, and so, and I've noticed, so Nicolay has that fox point, so it's, it's like, it's a pretty standard reference to the statutory language. I did notice Shorewood doesn't do it, but I don't know how they write, there's, they only have president and vice president. So I feel like I can't rely on that one necessarily. Um, but yeah, they all, they all say that, um, deposit district funds into our depository, like, we clearly don't do that.
Are you looking at seventy?
I'm looking at P zero, zero, one, seven, one point four.
Yeah.
It's the zeros. Um, go, keep going, um, are you an active? Oh, sorry, I'm in, um, Neil's policy.
Oh, okay, so we.
So I guess the, I was just wondering sort of anecdotally, like, is that just the practice? You referenced the statute and everybody not, like, how do we, you know?
I was fairly certain I learned at the beginning of that instead, or with the assist, or with just.
Yeah, we're basically. It actually does say that. Are you guys, I think, do you see that? I, this is new.
This is even showing up in like.
Did you add this? Okay, it says, it says, the treasurer of the board is responsible for the following duties. Come up, which may be committed to the assistance of appropriate staff and press, uh, acts or designate a person to buy a loan. It's just not finished. So, okay, that is, that, that clarifies it for me, does that work for you?
I think more to the point, is for the public to really understand, that's my question, for the public to truly understand. What does the board do and what does, what is?
Yeah.
What is the district staff doing, just so that the public understands?
I think the opportunity there would be to update our school board website. And for the treasurer role to say that the board member as a treasurer meets with the treasurer.
Right.
I mean, meets with the business office and reviews purchase card reports. Finally, and the president does X, Y, or Z, and then our business website.
Right.
Says, this is what the accountant does, this is what, like, some.
Yeah, and that's, I was doing the conversation again last week. I just, okay, you know, like, it's nice to know there's a statement that says with the assistance of. Because otherwise it's like, school board is running the thing, and I'm like, oh, we're not, I don't know.
Yeah, it's, I understand where you're, I think I understand where your business.
But that's.
That's for the treasurer. I think one of the problems with putting too much, since they've detailed in policy. Is that in the mountain of policies, it practices change. And then twenty years down, you're gonna have a policy that might change consistently in practice, which would be allowed legally. So better to keep the policies more general and then put that specifically in our.
Yes, which is why it's nice to know that there's that.
Okay, sorry, we're just working that out together, please, I didn't see that, it was, thank you for pointing that out. Um, does anyone else have questions?
This is very interesting today.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No, thank you.
Okay. We'll be back next week.
See you next week.
It's always depressing when they don't call in sick on the policy. Thank you.
Back to the agenda, um, what is that, co-budget business office, right?
There are a number of things Todd about signed.
Um, I did not see him yet, but I can double check, um. No.
Okay. The only reason I'm asking is like, did you send us an email? You know, we all day to day. There was a big audit, we see yesterday, um, Tuesday, April the key, that's a small final list of open items to the auditors. Down to a few items that waiting for lots identities, uh, most employment act, federal firm. I've had a couple of questions, they sent us some stuff, bank regulations, so the A's, we're moving forward on. I know that, um. We saw it last week for a half day, we've got, uh, we've got a, or neighboring districts that helped her with getting those things done. So that they are working on that. Since it's in length, many hard copy records related bank recs, let's speed it more lengthy process, there again, there is no paper trail. Prior to us sitting and starting to work on those things, that's a big issue. And Todd is also working with EPI, making sure our audit and report numbers are created by EPI as from our Skyway system. Forward our, you know, download our information to EPI directly. And so we're trying to make sure that those two are, are matching Skyway with that. So that is, that is continuing, but we're getting close to, to ending there. I apologize, uh, the. I started to be getting work on the, uh, credit card report and things, and I started going through things. What I noticed there is that it went through some of the months and some of the different categories. We, we've isolated them and separated them by department, stuff like that, for, for budgetary purposes, for county purposes. But in some of them, there are large items. There, for example, one month business office that, uh, I believe it was eighty-five thousand dollar credit card bill. But seventy-six thousand was to Apple computer and sold, or, uh, computers.
On purchase groups?
Yeah, because again, our system wasn't, the system purchasing through Skyway was not working last year, so that had to be there. So I decided what I have to do is go back through each, each month, and I will be highlighting. I'm thinking I'll be two thousand, twenty-five hundred dollar anything amount over that amount. And highlighting exactly what it is, because if I give you the amounts, you're gonna look and say, okay.
Right.
Why is this amount so high? So I need to break them down, which is taking a little more time to find out exactly what's. Cause some of the companies I see on, on reports that I need to meet with some of the administrators, find out exactly what they were doing. Cause I don't recognize some of the companies, especially in curricular areas and stuff like that. So we're continuing to work on that for you, um. The, uh. Had discussion, I have to, these, uh. Actually, I was involved, didn't happen to be with, um, Kevin Mullins. So we had some discussion about as we keep moving forward on the, uh, six million dollar borrowing, borrowing process. How that will work if we get, it's, uh, the days until you get a loan on the thirty-day thing, uh, going from there.
Sorry, what do you mean by that?
We, uh, now, we published the notice.
Okay.
And by statute, we have to see, uh. We have to wait thirty days before we can process paperwork. Cause the public does have the ability to request a referendum. So we're in this thirty-day holding period, which will end at the end of May. We don't have anything that will process all the final paperwork to the state of Wisconsin. Uh, or the, or the loan, uh, there, uh. I have in front of you the, uh, proposal for, uh. Uh, medical insurance and dental insurance, medical insurance, uh. That I'm recommending is coming down to a, I believe, a seven point nine percent, uh, increase. That would be a, uh, again, what, what that has done is, uh. That is down from the original twenty-one point nine. We used the twenty-one point nine, would be calculated to the balance of the, of the six million dollars borrow. Obviously, we're going to be coming in, and I believe, what did they say, there's a hundred and sixty thousand dollars under. What had been projected by that, uh, as I mentioned. Or the, the key ingredient there is the fact that, uh, United Health is working with Frehnerd. Hospital and their doctors and working to, to contract. With them and, and, or amounts of, of, of bills, the coverage, things like that, which will drive down the. Negotiated pricing and stuff, which, which is driving down the, uh, the cost of insurance. Uh, as you can see on there, there are some deductible, there are some copays that have reduced, uh, redundancy, boom, had increased. Five hundred dollars, things like that, there's some changes regards there. They have not done that with Ascension or their doctors, which is also under the United Health coverage. But, uh, no individual loses. Loses the capability of, of continuing with the doctors that they, that they have. They would be able to continue, it's just that what they're, you know, obviously they're gonna be. They would love us to encourage our people to move more, you know, to move more toward the freight or things like that. Because that's all going to be contracted, uh, there's an agreement on the pricing, stuff like that. So that is where we're at there, uh. We have not changed deductibles, things like that. So, as I mentioned before, you have some other options in future years as you go forward. Uh, it could be raising deductibles, it could be, what another area we looked at was, um. The whole prescription drug area, there could be potential savings and modification made in prescription drugs, things like that. But again, that gives you, that gives us board options in future years of, of working to control. All costs, uh, and if we, uh, when we take every option at one point in time, you have not, you have nothing. Then you have to absorb costs or things like that. Uh, we're keeping the employee contribution the same as it has been in the handbook. Again, that's another option down the road that this board could take, uh, as you moved, as you move forward. So again, we're getting a, a, uh. An increase that, that is, obviously, they, they're anticipating based on our experience. Based on our experience, twenty-one point nine is what they, we made no changes, is all based on our experience, that's what they would require. That we're willing to go in and, and work, uh. While the contracting stuff to go on, it's greater, uh, and those doctors, that's what's helping reduce the process of anticipation. That those bills will not be nearly as high as what they have been. And, uh, I was informed by Brown and Brown that at least one of our neighboring districts had already agreed to this. The other K eight districts have already, they play, grouping has already agreed this insurance. It's a trend that is beginning to see in the whole, the greater Milwaukee area with United, with United Health. Uh, dental, there is no increase, the dental insurance, uh, costs, everything would stay the same there, and that's not. That's not totally surprising because dental has over a few years tended to be, by experience. Uh, as an administrator, dental tends to be pretty, pretty consistent. They're not on a lot of ups and downs. Cause even if people some have some, you get a bunch of blood canals, or, or you get a bunch of crowns or things like that, it's not. That shift of, of cost is not really as dramatic as a major illness in, in health insurance. So dental is, is, uh, staying consistent, uh, in regards to, in regards to that. And I would like the, I mean, I don't know whether you've done this or not in the past, but I've always done this with my board. Throughout my career, I always had my board approve health and dental for the upcoming year. But, but that is a part of their, I would give part of your responsibility to those, those benefits. And these have finally was, with those benefits. And in a budget situation, you know, financial situation we were at is, I believe, it's sort of that you're improving. Major financial costs, even if, even if they're from year to year, that you're just aware of what's going on with that. Uh, then also included was the check register for the month of, uh, month of April. Show you the checks that were, that, there.
Can I ask if there are any questions around, uh, health insurance regardless of? I, I have, well, so, um, oh, good, okay, so, oh, yes, come on. All right, so you can ask it, well, come on.
I was taking a look on the Goodneil's website, and I was unable to tell whether there was both high deductible health plans and low deductible health insurance plans. I thought we could provide an answer on that.
We just, we just have the standard, the deductible that we have, just have, we just have a one health plan.
And?
That's offered all employees, and the deductible is the, uh, uh, two thousand, four thousand, two thousand, or single four thousand.
I don't know if that's technically the high deductible health plan or low deductible health plan. But I, if you are on a high deductible health plan, you are potentially eligible to do health savings discount contributions. Which, do you all offer an HSA or FSA?
Yes.
And, you know which one, is it HSA or FSA?
Oh, HSA.
HSA. And that's flexible, I think.
It's very flexible.
So, one thing to potentially then have cost savings is for, particularly with younger employees. If you offer a new plan that has a lot higher deductible, potentially they can do health savings discount contributions, which. An FSA is a use it or lose it, and no one likes to lose it. And with the high deductible health plan, they would be paying it more out of pocket if they do have, say, a bad. Health year, but if they're relatively young and would be really using health insurance anyways. That's allows them to put money into a health savings account, which would go in tax-free. They could invest it and throw it in something tax-free, and then they can take it out tax-free. For qual- any qualified medical expenses, say decades down the line when I switch, potentially back over to an FSA plan. Saying that's potentially something we'll get for cost savings, at least with some of the younger teachers.
And I do know that Brown and Brown has told us that we have to be cautious because we don't have a large pool of employees. Barely over a hundred. So that, that plays into it also. If my experience is, if you, if you have a pool of not obey. Be one of your plans to be coming even more expensive.
Have we ever offered a high deductible plan in this situation?
I mean, two thousand, four thousand is where you're at right now. I mean, obviously, again, that's an option down the road as you, as you look to. Care to try to control health insurance costs.
Are you?
Hey, I'm not sure if this would affect anything, but that's potentially a consideration for joining up with. Nicolay and the rest of the feeder districts, you know, Nicolay's or more like department rights, but I know that won't. Really go anywhere anytime soon anyways, so.
That was the question I was gonna ask, whether, we do either shared agreements, whether that's been considered, what's, what are the pros and cons of? Doing healthcare collectively in the other part of districts.
Obviously, the, you know, obviously, if you could get everyone to agree, you're having a much larger, you're having a much larger room to spread the, the cost. The issue that occurs is those districts, if there are any districts who are having great medical years. Uh, and not having a lot of expenses. They don't like being in that because their premiums fall to a wall, because they're having to cover. The districts who are having much higher costs. And so you run into that issue, I mean, the issue would be, would it work if you could sit down with everyone and say, okay. What are your costs per, per premium, and if everyone was fairly consistent? Then you could look and say, okay, maybe a cooperative, you know, maybe they would be more in line to form a cooperative. Uh, but again, if one is having great, uh. It's having great experience. Uh, they're not gonna be excited about going in and having artificially raised premiums to cover. Cover our districts. cover our districts.
It sounds like it's something that would be worthy potentially exploring in the future. I mean, we have shared, like, I think, given how much health insurance is escalating, it's, it would seem prudent to at least have those conversations.
I, I would, I would, I would say to you that that would be a conversation that someone administration whatever could have with Brown and Brown, because I believe that they assault with.
Yeah.
And I think the partners both have talked about it, so you could kind of, it's some history and
But this, I mean, thank you for getting us from twenty one percent, seven point nine percent, and that was.
Like I said, these are, again, my concern was also saying giving to you that you had options because health insurance is not something going to disappear off the table. It's, it's gonna be an issue that you're gonna have to face, you know. So we're sitting in my chair, you're gonna be dealing with it in a yearly basis and you're gonna have to deal with it because it has huge impact on, on the budget. That's how the pair of costs have not are going up much greater than
Yes.
revenue control or CPI or anything like that. And so it's obviously gonna have an impact on.
I have a couple, two to three questions. Um is this the timing with which you would, with this deep as practice, that the time where we should be looking at this kind of a plan and of moving it?
Yes. Okay, because uh in the insurance companies will, as much as in my past, as much as I would try to push them for March or April, they would not because they want to get as much information on experience. Especially the medical part, much information on experience as they possibly could. I can tell you that I first got here February, whenever we got information from Life and L T D that said, yeah, there's gonna be no increase, well, they knew that. They knew that right away based on experience because there wasn't, you know, little or no experience in that, uh in the past year or so.
Would you recommend that life insurance and L T D be part of this, like, proactive, like, sharing with the board?
Yeah, ultimately, it should be, yes.
Okay. And I would imagine, like, board insurance and that kind of thing, which I haven't seen. Thinking about, but um.
I would just say that that would be, this now is, is basically fringe benefit insurance. What you're offering employees, when you say board insurance, things like that, the whole issue of property insurance, liability insurance, uh there's a
Statutory required.
Auto, auto insurance that the district has to have. My recommendation, and we don't have, I don't, we don't have information yet uh for that, but my, my past practice is always, I brought that all forward for all, also so that you understood what A, what the coverages were that the district had and B, what was the cost and any changes. I will tell you the, the, the major hangup right now in this, in that insurance is property insurance. Uh property insurance people have been, I guess they've been blasted by the storms, things like that. And the whole prob, and the whole property insurance thing is is um crazy. I mean, they're, they're just I just was in my previous district yesterday uh just to assist, they might be look over their budget and stuff. Still having, uh and so they told me they lost their property insurance because the uh, they have flat ropes. And the insurance company, so they're no longer insuring flat ropes, even though that insurance company has been insuring entire thirteen years I had been there, they now are, you know, and it's going, you know.
I didn't know it was impacting this concept. I know the costs were seeing uh companies going down markets and stuff, but I did not know we were
We have heard, we have heard.
Back to health insurance, everybody, right? Just, but I, but that, but
But, but just to say that, that quite, that's why, yeah, I'm monitoring and working on that. That's why you, you haven't seen that yet because of that. I started.
No, 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 that, I mean, no, that, I mean, that's good. I want, I think the, the note for the board is that these uh insurance reviews and approvals should be on the board calendar. So that we know when they're coming and anticipate them. Um.
Both of them could be normally in May.
Okay. So my other question, so you noted that ER deductible was one of the main changes. There's a couple, there's a couple other ones. I guess in general, what's the practice around engaging, like, staff feedback? Is that part of this process at all? Is it something where it's like, app and season makes the decision that shares it out, but like, or is there any kind of engagement?
The, the, the normal process, and we are looking to try to schedule a meeting with staff on the the twenty fourth uh to go over some staff goals and changes and things like that. Uh as we go through things, I mean, it's the normal, again, by practice, by pass, what we would normally do is we would take a look at these and uh we had time get options and then sit down with staff and say
So that, okay.
You know, here's, here's where we're at. What are you?
What's most important to you?
Yeah, what, what are you dealing in and, and things like that and say then I would have staff say, okay, I would say to staff, okay, if you want, if you want, you don't want to change your plan, here's what the financial impact is.
Yeah, okay. I just wanted to make sure.
But yeah, that was the normal thing was that you would try to do that. This one is mainly because of just the changes that are occurring, because of the fact that no one's losing their doctors, things like that.
Yeah. Okay.
It gets much involvement, be.
Okay. But I just want to understand best practice.
Yeah, right, right. Best practice would be to
Okay.
Assault with them.
Those are my questions. Anyone else? Um that, so that, sorry, this was health and dental. Do you, there were also any questions for Gus around uh the rest of the business office update?
So you keep, you guys keep saying that there's no paper trail or the bank records. Those were all provided online. I guess there's, the bank can't set those again? I'm confused about when those.
No, there's no bank record, you know. For bank reconciliation, we would normally run that through Skyward and there would be
Okay.
No, we can get anything we want from the bank.
I, I was like, this makes no sense. I mean, there's no paper trail, only it's our paper trail.
It's the internal paper trail that, that should be there to
They're trying to recreate.
To, that shows all the work that we're, you know, doing in different
Yeah.
Different aspects of, of um
Yeah.
Preparation of the financial documents.
Um I was expecting to also see a P card.
That, I, that's what I was, oh, P card.
Like my, does the monthly, monthly P card report?
That just
We'll get that to you now.
And I, I continue to have the question of um, at the vote, two gentlemen who spoke earlier of why um the registers are in admin content instead of in public content.
The check registers.
Like any of this document, I, I, in the past, it was to get redacted and then put in public content. And I think that's
I'm just forwarding, I mean, I'm forwarding the statements.
Like, will this typically just go into public?
No, because that's a Typically, I mean, my recollection is that in the past, that's what we would see. It's a few years ago, right? I could go to
Yeah.
Board docs and I would see either that monthly report that a business manager used to produce. And I, me and this is what I remember. And the check register redacted. You know, there are like private and patients and stuff that would be So it's something I'd like to ask them. We, we do, because it also for me at least, I'm always confused whether I can talk about details that are in admin content documents.
So.
My, my experience was um that my boards was they would, they would refer everything by check number.
Okay.
Because the check number is there and you can refer to the, if you have any question about the check number.
But if, if we can put this stuff in public content, I think we should, right now, we need to be as transparent as we can be.
Yes.
Confidence all around and to give as much access to information as we can, or what we're allowed to produce.
So, well, so I, I guess the board request then is to redact the check register and make that public for our next meeting. Or whenever the next, or the June. Yeah. And then I, I have a follow up on that. So is it possible to simply provide the monthly expenses and the monthly revenue, like those reports? For current monthly expenses and current monthly revenue? Or how is that? Is that possible? You had started, but I knew there was some, and like, there wasn't, like
Started, I started running, you know, a financial report, but to concern was that, that, that the budget was, you know, and somewhere, somewhere was, you know.
But just straight up expenses and revenue? Is that, how is that dependent on the, but like?
Expenses, we, expenses we can run based on the, right now, we can run the expenses that we're um that they're running through Skyward. You can see those, some of those that may be have to be journalized, but may or may not be in there. Trying to catch up on that revenue right now, always, that's the issue. We gotta deal with them, journalizing all the revenue, getting that in, because it doesn't run through Skyward.
Okay. Cause I, I guess then my concern is as we're trying to catch up, we're still continuing to fall behind, right? So
Yeah.
We're just, it's, I, I just don't see how we get out of that loop. So what if we need to get out of that?
Well, we're gonna have to by, by June thirtieth, we're gonna have to have everything, everything entered and journalized. Most revenue expenses to be able to have an audit in the summer and I would let staff know that that we have to have that on nineteen thirtieth. And then beginning July one, we would be, that would be occurring as, as the events as the events occur, they would be
Be able to move forward from July one.
July one, you should be
Do we have the capacity within the business office right now and within our admin team to actually meet that deadline? By the June thirtieth?
It's gonna be a struggle, but we're gonna
So how can we make it not a struggle? How can we help? Like, what, what else do we need? Do we need more eyes, more hands? Do we need? I'm just trying, you know. I don't want to get to June thirtieth and feel like, shoot, we didn't support or do something, we should
No, no, I, I, and, and
Is it, I mean, what?
Yeah, it's time and effort, but I'm not, personally, it's a matter of seeing and seeing, I mean, though Todd has been trying to talk to C five to get us some help and support, but that is they're swamped and overwhelmed uh with looking at other ways that, again, uh except uh our home, you know, other districts, they helped with certain parts of that and trading and things like that. Looking for all the resources that we can, that we can find to assist us in that, yeah. Do not be afraid, do not worry if I need to, I need something, probably by, well, don't worry, I'll let you know. Right now, I, I feel that I have the utmost support of
Okay.
On the board to do whatever I need to do to get things done.
So would that mean that the, the bank recs for this year are not yet current? Not yet done? Or are they current? Are we current on those?
No, because we have to finish the June thirtieth bank routing.
Okay, we have to.
For last year.
Okay.
Because that will become our starting balance. To then, to then proceed
Okay. Uh my last question, sorry, is um have, can, can we confirm that we have noticed properly the revised budget we approved at our last meeting? Has somebody done that?
I, I have time to get that to the paper yet.
Okay, but don't we have to do that with, like, I don't know the
Yeah, there's timelines, so yeah, that's, I, that's
Within fourteen days or four, fourteen days? Okay. So No, I, I, I can ask, we posted for a certain amount of time. I don't know the exact.
Are we talking on the website?
The website? No, there's specific notice requirements when you revise a budget. And it's those.
Yeah, we're working with Todd.
As we like publish in a newspaper, kind of like how we would do it on the front end when, before we approve an original budget, this is retro, it's like after. So all I'm asking is that somebody can confirm with the board when it's done.
Yep.
Okay. That's it for me. Anyone else? Thank you, covered it. Okay, sorry. Okay, no, I appreciate that, guys. I was, I just Thank you, guys.
I agree with you, but you should be asked about a question.
Yes.
I'll be apologizing for asking.
Um actually, so you have asked for uh board approval of the health and dental rate for twenty four, twenty five. So does anybody want to make that?
Someone.
Okay, so there is a motion and a second to approve the health and dental rates for twenty twenty four for twenty twenty five. Uh all in favor, voice vote aye. Aye. Any opposed? Most passes. Thank you for your work on that. Um, all right. Oh.
Was, was that motion for just the health and dental rates or for both the monthly financials and?
It was not. I don't know.
Of health and dental.
Just health and dental.
Yes, I guess that's as much as we could do. Okay, okay, sure. Let's do it. I'm to approve the April check register. I'll second. All in favor, voice vote aye. So, okay, the motion passed. Check register is approved. Okay. Consent agenda, our consent agenda is hefty and contains approval of minutes for our four three, four, our four three count meeting, our four eight order chemistry meeting, or some special meeting, four seventeen regular meeting, and four nineteen special meeting. It includes C one contract renewal. It includes uh motion to approve the changes to the math course offerings as presented in our past meeting at Glendale Hills. It includes approval of the professional development calendar for twenty four, twenty five. Um German teacher shared services for, we have been agreed with the Nikole district. Prove up the people non-discrimination self-evaluation report, right wing contract renewal, and personal changes, which include the resignation, one resignation. Uh That's it. Okay.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second. All in favor, voice vote aye. Aye. Any opposed? The consent agenda is approved. There's so much hard work to put into that consent agenda. I thank everybody for that. Lots of preparation, participation to pay for it. Uh special is this. Okay, it's um time. We are going, we're moving on to our special order of business uh which is the election of school board officers. And No, if I get this wrong, I'm saying that, okay. Um so the, the first thing we have to do, and I'm not actually sure if we have to have a motion to do a slate, or I can just motion to make, to make this slate.
Like, you have to turn the school board meeting on for
Yeah, I don't have the administrator shot. That's right, that is. I don't even can do a slate. No, you can do a slate, but it says the first one is, do we do a slate or do you vote?
So I would think somebody could move to
I would move such a slate? Okay, I would end present the slate or is it two separate motions? That's what I'm trying to figure out.
I think it would be, it's that you would motion that it's
Correct. And if you were small board, you guys get it. So, let's go. Um I would move that the board vote on a slate that would include Carla Pennington Cross as president. Myself as vice president, Karen Cronwell as treasurer, Katie Avalos as clerk, and Chris Robinson as assistant clerk. And board secretary Taylor Dessau, she will have us. That would be my, that's my motion. Is there a second?
Who did you say for charger? I'm sorry.
Me, Karen.
With enthusiasm.
And then Katie and Berksler.
Say aloud, Chris. Say aloud.
Not, okay. And
Is there a second?
I'm second. Okay, um, great. There's a motion and a second and um Oh, God, I get it. No, I mean, you have to do the motion and the second, so Should you vote? Okay. Cause nobody's pushing back. Any discussion?
Any discussion?
I'm just begging for a lot of grace.
Because you are Because you are a job description. You are a stage part. And I'm, for discussion, I just want to say that it has been one hell of a year as a president. And it has been a, but it's been a really great year being able to work and build with everybody. Um and I'm ready for just like a little bit of a scene change, a little bit of um a break uh to tend to my family and to just maybe be more of a disruptor of this board than like an organizer, you know. Um and I'm really excited for Carla to take over as hefe. Um and ideally Um, and ideally, in my mind, this, this is a flat hierarchy, no, no one person is, um, like, A B leader. I think we all just have our roles and responsibilities, and hopefully, we're all, you know, engaged and passionate in our officer roles, and those are just titles. Or just. So. That being said, all in favor of the slate as discussed? Aye, aye, any opposed?
Oh, my God, you're done.
That's, that's just.
Yours.
It's yours, thank you.
Alright, thank you, everyone. One hundred percent agree with Danielle about the idea of a flat structure. Um, and we can collaboratively get it all done together, so you're not on your own this structure. We're all, we're all here with you. Um, alright, so we've got the rest of our agenda, which I now have to run.
Correct.
Alright, item six B, confirmation of board member policies and rules. Um, we're supposed to. Affirm. What are we supposed to do?
Yeah, I mean, I.
I'm supposed to affirm our governance policies.
Right. I did have a note that we updated the old policies. I add to the. Oh, okay, so you're referring to current board over here, so I would move to affirm the current board governance policies. Noting that updated. I understand the idea, um, no, I don't think I do. That I, I move to affirm the current board governance policies.
I think this is more like a technicality, but to remind. You board members, they exist, which we all know, cuz we're working. Uh, any discussion? All in favor, vote aye, any opposed, alright? Those have been affirmed. Item six E, um, board meeting dates. So this is at the last meeting, I think we had consensus that rather than calling one meeting cow and another meeting board meeting. That we would just have two board meetings a week.
We need a, a month, a month.
A month, sorry.
Yeah, I mean, I like you guys.
I didn't. And so, based on that sense, there's a proposed schedule.
However, it seems like there was, are there certain things that are legally required for us to do at every school board meeting? Like, is there a legitimate reason for us to call one, a school board meeting and one something else, so that we don't have to duplicate efforts? Don't you just have to be one of them? Yeah, no, I mean, like, so.
There were reports, I guess, that were, that he said were mandated.
Um, they could, I think for now, I. At each school board meeting and upon request, I mean, that could be. What is that, so he, like, we're, um, talking about having to have financial reports available, but or upon request could mean at one board meeting, we have it, we presented. At a second board meeting, it could be requested. So I don't think so, cuz I do think there are districts that just do two board meetings, and they're not living outside the law, but I, I can confirm. And for now.
I know, me too, oh, yeah.
Well, I mean, I.
Yeah, as a practical matter, I don't think it matters if we call them cow or regular meetings, so if it's a concern, we can still call the first meeting a cow. I just don't wanna accidentally make a decision that then slides into.
I think it's good to. I don't think it will do that, I think we should confirm, but for, for now, I think if we call them board meetings, we can always change it. But I think the idea is that board meetings mean we could take action, and we want the public to be aware that, uh, there's so much work going on right now, we wanna take action if we need to.
Yeah, I don't just.
So.
Theory, I just don't wanna have an accident on this.
Yeah, so I think we should confirm, but we can follow up on this, yeah.
And I think we can pass the calendar regardless.
Yeah, yeah.
Discuss the calendar.
Yes.
So you all should have the attached, um, dates, right, do you have the attachment? Uh, or it looks like this. Oh, yeah, right. Um, what I noted on there. June, we're going to do the meetings in Tuesday, right, I think we discussed that at the last meeting, and everyone said that was okay. July, that first Wednesday is July the third, so. Could change those July meetings as noted in the notes to the tenth and the twenty fourth of July. It's everyone's thing.
So, I just figured it would be hard to find the.
So in July, the proposal in this, um, chart would be to hold the meetings. The two July meetings on the tenth and the twenty. So second.
I think that works. Still good, well, you get a week in between till the next. Yeah. I mean, I don't have any.
You get two weeks before the August meeting, then.
Right, right.
Right. Does that work for everyone?
I might have a conflict on the tenth, it's like a pretty.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, and on for the twenty fourth, I'm gonna be out of town, so I'll either tell my birthday or. Or not. Okay, and then the.
Rosh Hashanah.
Rosh Hashanah, Rosh Hashanah is October second. So we could either move that, or starts on October second, the evening of. So we could either move it to the first. Or like those meetings by a week each as well.
I'm available on the first. So I have a paper then.
Yeah, okay, so we'll make that October one, okay. Does that? I'm sorry.
Oh, that's that Tuesday, and we're ready, so that would be a Tuesday in October.
So now we're looking at making October two instead, October one, to avoid. Um, bumping up against Rosh Hashanah.
Flip it in the first.
Is that like, or? So it would be a Tuesday, and I would call you a potential Tuesday.
Yeah, I would. I would rather do a Monday, Wednesday. Switch, because otherwise, I mean.
Could we do? Them. I can't even get my phone up right now. Did we do?
Nine hundred and twenty third?
Then I give the twenty third.
Oh, okay.
Alright, so we'll do October nine and twenty third in October.
Ask if we meet on Halloween.
And then, then next.
It is day.
Yeah, I don't wanna meet on the year. So we did the eighth, the twenty sixth.
Uh, eighth and the twenty second. Anyone else, eighth and twenty second?
And then, of course, many conflicts arise, right?
Yeah.
Expectedly, we can change them as needed, but it's nice to get them established now. And my, my hope is that with an established board calendar, that things like the band. Would be scheduled at times that don't make. Cause today, I just missed my son's last middle school band concert to be here.
This is just a question I have, just to clarify, if, if we're doing two regular board meetings a month, does that mean that we are not having a cow meeting ever, or this is in addition?
No cows, just two meetings.
No cows.
Now, for now, this is just because we're, there's a, a need for us to be able to take action. At meetings right now with all of the work that's coming our way, with the budget and that, all, of all, everything.
And our cows have largely operated as regular meetings, since we've had action show at almost every meeting.
Does that then mean that likely the only committee that we're going to have is just equity, and there's no other committees that we have, correct?
Well, or those updates could happen during a school board meeting, I think, twelve percent, right? Like, I, oh, like, cause it's a committee of the whole, so you're, you're asking, like, when would those updates be made, or like, how would they communicate with?
And just the existence of other committees, I guess, I just want clarification.
Committee has ended, as a per, it's like, um, as it, it's renewed for every year, right? So it will have to be renewed, and once it is, it would be an ad hoc committee, that, yeah, would probably be the only, like, committee, committee sanctioned by the school board at this time. Um, but, and then once our policies are solidified, um, around committees and meeting structures, like, those are all coming down the line too, I think. Well, it's already on.
Alright, do we have to take any action on that of calendar?
Yeah, I think so. I move to approve the calendar with the changes as discussed. Oh, I'm so sorry, before we, yes, we.
I got you.
I'm feeling, I'm feeling really.
Thank you for your.
Thank you, Danielle. My fault, it's my fault, not your fault.
One thing, if you do end up changing the only school board meetings, uh, just like some sort of public notice on if everything's gonna be six thirty going forward.
Oh, they're, they're bringing that up, we're gonna make them at six P M, because that works for everyone, they will all be starting at six P M.
Okay, that's hard, okay.
I'm gonna go back a step, because I didn't get my arm up fast enough it up. But I'm Michelle Sarsia, I'm the, over there, sixty five, twenty five yard Francheline Road. Just out of curiosity, going back to when you guys were re-elected new positions. You guys were gonna do like a training for something last month, or getting that, will there be something to give you support? For your new role, for your role and everything, will there be any of that? And I give you credit, because it's the hardest thing, stepping down right now. And now that, you know, just so, there is that support for a new board going forward with everything, are you guys going to hear?
We did onboarding a week ago, so that's our basic training, um, Danielle has been working with WASDA, the Wisconsin.
No, Anna.
Anna has been working with WASDA, the Wisconsin Association of School District Administrators to set up, um, training. And retreat work, and what I would say generally is that we have five very engaged, um. Very deliberate members of this board right now, who, each of us is very capable and very willing to ask when we need to, to learn something, so I think, um.
Is there any way that? Don't wanna put on those, you know, guys could be like a support person, not a front, front like this, but. Would you be, you know, your old district called you back to say, hey, could you give us a little pointer, when, you know, do you have that support, because? You have that, you have some doubts about this. You're a little worried, is that what I figured?
No, 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 yeah, because, I mean, I know what it is.
I'm doing work for the childcare center.
Yeah.
And not having the support of this person or that person helping me out, because I sat there. First of all, and now what did they do? They changed programs on me.
You had to speak.
And I went crazy with all new programs.
I love it.
Oh, this has been an awesome two weeks.
So, I'll say, I'll say this, that, uh, well, we have ensured that Gus will be leaving us with a guide of best practices around business and finance before he's done, he's promised.
I want to hear that by me.
Yeah, so, so we're gonna get that, and then, um, I think this whole board shares the goal of continuous improvement and development, we wanna model what we ask. And, you know, mandate of our staff and our admin team, and, um, so there are, like, people are to the, we are on learning platform. Which gives us access to presentations and things kind of, and psychology, and then ideally, we would have. More than one, like, we would have this, uh, like, retreats at governance workshops, and, and we'll do self-evaluations, and. So that we'll have our own continuous, like, improvement.
I mean, I don't see this board staying still with anything, I see this board.
Yeah.
Going forward, very, very much so, and I saw that when things were an accident, oops, I saw you guys. Going with that, I just wanted to make sure you guys had that support, you didn't get it from us, or we're going.
Oh.
Cause I, I gone with this, going like, oh, I gotta call this company to ask for this.
Just wanted to speak.
Yeah.
And thanks for caring. And, and I would add, because I think we take it for granted sometimes, we also have a really strong administrative team. That's the biggest focus on the day today, is that team working together, our principals, our district leaders, our staff. And who are constantly.
Yeah, I work quite, like I said, a lot with Hardway. We tend to lose, you know, Glen Hills at times, because.
Yep.
The need and everything, but, um. You know, I, I feel a good partnership with them, I feel that they are, and they have been supportive. With everything that's, you know, really, to everything, I definitely would say. It, it's a good team coming much better together, and seeing this, and working and not just. Pointing fingers and saying this or that, I never saw that, really, I saw more of a group of people wanting to come together. And start moving forward, so high five for you guys, but I just wanted to make sure you guys were getting and would be getting support. And not just. Because I'm a winner.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so were there any?
Yes, I did get that.
Yes, okay, okay.
Do you wanna finish up maybe?
I do not. I'm sorry, it's. Are there any other public comments?
You're gonna have to vote me too.
Alright, on to item sixty, determination of. Oh, we didn't, okay, there's, was there a second?
Oh, there was, and then, yes, and then participation.
Alright, all in favor of, uh, the motion to approve the board meeting schedule as we have discussed?
Aye.
Any opposed? That schedule is adopted. Onto item six D, um, there is a recommendation for us to approve the list of district depositories. For the remainder of, I suppose, letter, those numbers are wrong, it must be for the remainder of twenty three, twenty four. And for twenty four, twenty five. Um, it's procedural matter, we are required to designate depositories for district funds. There are three depositories listed, J P Morgan Chase, U S Bank. Wisconsin Investment Series, go out, who's the national network? Is there a motion?
So moved. Second, what do we need to correct? Uh, oh, I'm sorry, I, I was making a motion to approve the list of direct depositors for the remainder of twenty three, twenty four, and for twenty four, twenty five. Second.
I would like someone to explain to us what these three depositories are, just briefly, like, what their.
Questions, yeah.
J P Morgan Chase, both. J P Morgan Chase, most hot and I don't know for certain what. What has, that has, what this past use has been, we're not aware that there's any funds in there, but it had been approved prior, so we felt. Let's just continue to prove it, because until, you know, because we don't know exactly what this, we had been using that.
We have an account there?
We have, we must have some type, we, we, at one point, must have had an account there. Some point, it showed up on, on previous depositary lists. U S Bank is our, is the bank that we do all of our banking with. Uh, and the last one, uh, P M A Financial Network, Wisconsin Investment Series. Uh, the district has used that in the past, uh, when you've had. Access funds or that, uh, you said, or, uh, you could get much better interest rates through their investment. Than, than you put it through the, necessarily through the bank. Uh, the times that you would use that would be. Previous years, probably. Past years, when you had a healthy fund balance and you had situations where cash flow was fine, if everything was okay, you might invest. Usually in spring, sometimes you would invest some extra money for a few months, just to earn some extra interest. Because you did need that cash at that point in time, it's usually in the spring, because then the, the property tax money has, you've gotten the December payments, January payments. Property tax, and that's when a district is. During that time, it's probably more. Has more cash on hand than, than, than other times of the, of the year. Uh, so it would be used again for, uh. I've done that in the past, previous districts, you could invest some at certain points in the year that I had excessive cash to earn additional interest. Right now, there's, there's nothing in there. But. But again, it would be something that we definitely want to look at, that's, that's a potential.
So is it, with regards to the J P Morgan?
So is it, with regards to the JP Morgan Chase depository, is it normal to approve a depository that we don't understand the history of and don't seem to have an existing relationship with?
Well, the, the thing would be that, I mean, you can choose not to not to use it, but if for some reason there was a rationale for using it, and, and.
Well, if we have an account there.
And.
We don't even know.
We don't have, so I guess I would ask if we could gain some clarity around if there's an account that somehow been.
If you fish your, if you fish your table, yeah, because if you, you, if you decide not to approve it, then if there, if there was some rationale that, well, Dr. Gray and I aren't aware of, we have, someone has to come back to the board and have you approve reopening the account.
Sure, I guess part of the point is, I just, it's concerning that it would be easier, I think, to understand if there was an existing relationship.
Okay.
Um, I'm not suggesting that we don't vote on it tonight. I just would like a clarification of what the relationship is, the history of the relationship. Because I can appreciate, like, three depositories, it gives us an option if we need it. I don't see how that's a damage. I'm hoping that's not a growth opportunity for me.
Yeah, but we can investigate the history, and then if we find out that there's no reason for us to kind of prove it's not, if we find out there's no reason, they keep it, keep it existing, we bring it back on a, on a future board agenda, and you could vote to close it.
Right.
Danielle. Um, since the statute's not listed here, is there like a deadline that by, by which every year we should be approving depositories? Is one question. And is it, is there like a best practice or standard practice around, like, having multiple, like, what's normal for depositories? And does it, is there, are there different just rates?
It, the, the it is the common practice at the reorganization meeting, which is that you've also approved depositories there. The rationale for having multiple ones is A, services that might be offered again. There are ways to invest in things like that. B, while we sometimes auditors will get have some concern. We haven't had that issue lately, but back, I think, in two thousand eight, when we saw a bunch of bank closings across the nation, I remember my auditor's got a little more concerned about FDIC and how much money, you know, how much money was insured at the bank, things like that. So having a couple different, again, auditors haven't been that concerned about that lately. They haven't been on, on our cases.
Oh, I see what you're saying. They wanted you to stay under the maximum for insurance coverage, so you managed multiple, I was getting that, okay.
Yeah, that works. And, and, you know, and again, we have to be honest with that, some of that is difficult in a school district because in this district, the payroll is more than, once payday, it's more than the FDIC coverage and stuff like that. But then you would just, in those days, you would just try to move money on payday to make sure you could make the payroll, but you didn't have a lot of excess money sitting at the bank.
Okay, thanks.
Any more questions? There was a motion on the second.
I am ready to vote. Do you have any public questions?
How many people are on one? You can always ask them.
I think, I think at our max, we were at eight currently.
Oh. This is, this is, it's us. Alright, all in favor of authorizing the designated depositories for district funds for the remainder of twenty-three, twenty-four and for twenty-four, twenty-five as listed in the agenda? All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Thank you, and thank you for your help in understanding that, yes. The next item, six E is for discussion. This is about determining delegates and representatives. And Danielle reminded me earlier today that past practice has been to kind of identify this, and then the president goes away and tells people what they're gonna do, and I prefer not to do it that way. I prefer for us to have a discussion and people kind of choose mutually where the good fits are. I would say that Chris has a first mover advantage in having expressed to me a strong interest in serving as the WASB delegate. And so I'm inclined to, and that's a, that's big ask, because that's a two to three day convention, you have to go and be with all the other delegates. So unless anyone else wants to fight for that role, I'm inclined to say yes and thank you so much for being willing to do that. And then I used to be on the foundation. I'm happy to continue in that role of supporting the foundation work, but also very, very happy to let someone else take over that. And Danielle has said, oh, that's right, you said you would. Danielle has suggested a, a role for herself as the liaison to our volunteer organizations, the PTO and the foundation. I think that would be a great fit for her.
Oh, it was my first preference, though.
Yeah.
I, my first preference was none. My second was PTO.
And then I, yeah, so, so what that leaves us with is.
Does anybody else want that? Foundation or PTO? Um, okay.
So what's left is SWISSA and CISA. SWISSA and CISA, and I'm, I'm looking at you two ladies.
So technically, I'm a CISA.
Okay.
I, well, I am, but I don't really understand, like, I can't go find their conference.
I think there's a conference, but it happened before, I think you were, might have happened before you were.
Which would suggest it's like happening soon.
It's weird. It is happening really soon. I was gonna try to find Tino, because they send it, and then it's right after you guys have made this decision. I'm not, so let's find the date.
So CISA and SWISSA, can you tell them about CISA and SWISSA, because I don't truly know. SWISSA is more legislative, right?
It's, I was so swash, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Um, CISA does have monthly meetings, like seven thirty to nine, I think, virtually.
Yes. Yeah.
They're not gonna drive it into work.
I hear that.
Well, I think they just cover, like, legis, important education legislation or things that they wanna advocate around or or create, even they created, like, so I've had people draft like.
The meeting is.
The twenty-first.
The CISA.
Yeah, make twenty-first.
I'm gonna put that in the agenda right now.
CISA is the first. Oh, that's next week.
Yeah, it's, it's bad timing.
But I think that's like the one thing you do.
Is it an all-day meeting?
I mean, that was my point.
Oh, so would you like to remain at the CISA?
I, I just dropped it in the.
My point is, I didn't know what it was for sure. I became the, came the rep after it happened.
Oh, yeah.
So, okay, right.
So are you interested in continuing on with that and attending the meeting next Tuesday or April?
It's at five thirty.
I think by default, it's my, because you can't get there at five thirty, right?
So I guess I'm SWISSA.
And I, I don't have anything. So, like, if SWISSA is monthly, if there were conflicts, like, we could work it out together to see if you want me to cover one for you or.
Taylor. Um, two questions. Are we saying is PTO foundation combined, or are we?
Yes.
Okay, so that, so Danielle would be PTO slash foundation?
Liaison.
Liaison.
That also means that she's the board rep on the foundation. That's a technical role in the bylaws for the foundation. So you can describe her as the board representative.
Board representative. And then my other question is, what, the, the the learning, I guess, that the, the board delegate would get from each of these institutions? Is that something that that would be shared out in board member reports, or?
Yes.
Okay.
It's a thought.
Alright. Yeah, that's an ideal. I think we can work out whether that is an open meeting agenda item, or whether it's if someone prefers to report in writing, you know, we could send emails.
Be part of a Friday.
Make it part of a Friday update, working with our superintendent. I don't think they need to be rigid.
Is someone gonna?
I would have to figure that out.
I, yeah, I think I have a new situational, but perhaps like the foundation CTO, it might be like a standing board meeting report. Because there's, you have generally, you have the general information there, but like WASB, CISA, SWISSA might be more.
And I know very little about these liaison roles, but I will try to find out whatever I can.
Apparently, literally for future reference, CISA is a one-shot deal. It is about three hours total, including chat with mine.
Maybe I'll do it next year and take the day off work when I can get there.
Now, CISA, the CISA conventions, at least, and I assume that they're consistent across the state, by district, CISA five, the annual, annual convention, it is usually at, it's at night. And it is, it is the equivalent, or you don't have to. That's right. It's the equivalent of, for the, what would be an annual meeting or similar stuff. You guys have to do a budget hearing, that thing. It, it's very similar to, to that, but it's for CISA and the school districts, obviously, because they are members of CISA are asked to send a representative to the meeting to deal with any, any or listen to any reports and any actions that might be requested. So, yeah, it's, it, that's been my experience when I'm dealing with board members in regards to the CISA.
Yes, Danielle.
I have a question just about, it makes me think of closing the achievement gap consortium. And is that just like, is that an admin center? Like, so just superintendents for districts belong to it, they meet, and then the superintendent shares out information when there's relevant board.
Like, retention number two, like.
Oh, okay.
Different administrators, different.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
I think it would be nice at some point, this is like low on my list of important dates, to know what organizations we have memberships in, in general.
Yeah, I mean, like.
Like to have a list. Wouldn't it be great to have a list, like, the.
For the board or for?
For this.
For the board to know, like, when we go to the, closing the achievement gap consortium, we tend to find out about it at hub. It comes up, and someone's like, hey, you could go to this. It'd be great for all of us as, as part of our planning, I think, to know kind of part of the calendar work. You know, these are the organizations for memberships. We have memberships, but these are the kinds of events we, we might be able to with.
Yeah.
I'll sign up. English is so limited for me.
Okay, look at that, mail time.
Alright, thank you guys for making that easy. Board member reports. We're on to item seven A, and this is, it says discussion information in. Or it's supposed to be voting on these. Does that mean we can't?
It's okay, you can talk about them, and we can. I'm sorry.
Yep, there, it'll be a month, it'll be in the wrong month, but these were three resolutions that were, we were going to vote on today, and now they won't. And I'll just say for the reported records, one is the Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month resolution, a resolution in support of that Heritage Month, which began in nineteen ninety-two, when the US Congress established that. The second is a resolution in support of Jewish American Heritage Month, which is also in May, and which was also established by the US Congress, and you all have received these to review. The third is the Mental Health Awareness Month, which is also in May of twenty twenty-four. These are all resolutions that, thanks to Danielle's work, making sure we get these sorts of resolutions passed. Were passed last year, and they've been updated this year. So you will vote on them at the next meeting. Yes, Danielle.
Um, so when, when we do vote next one, perhaps like a little district spotlight on some of the things that occurred, like I see signage and stuff, I don't know. Or just a little, and he just, I don't know if anything cool happened, or highlights that admin would wanna share, that would be wonderful.
I see Taylor's hand up.
Yeah, um, for the resolutions, we, we do truly want all five board members to sign them, correct?
So there's one that just has.
President, we can't sign it until that.
Correct. So I'm just ma, I'm just making a note, should I revise one of them to include all five signatures? Because one of them only has two.
Yes.
Okay.
And I also noticed some non, just trivial typos. So would you like me to share those with you or send you an updated document?
Sure, if you wanna send me the updated one.
Okay. It's because I redlined it, some like weird double commas and stuff, so.
Yeah.
I can fix that and send.
That's great.
Send you the new ones for the next board meeting.
And then they're on the titles, maybe just making those really consistent, too.
Yes.
Okay.
Alright. Any other comments? Any other thoughts about these resolutions? Alright, we're at item eight, A, review of to-do items. Currently on the list are the employee handbook provisions, a good old info packet for June, but not for the June calendar, just for the June personal, no, 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 it'll still be Cal for June, right? We're still in. No, it's June, right? WASDA land retreat, hopefully it's gonna happen sometime this summer. We're waiting for building some grounds, updating planning. The only item I am thinking we might add is issue you raised last time about establishing communication norms. That I had circulated some information on, that was, I thought about it, I will, I'll say, you want to learn more about this? So I, I shared with everyone some materials, if you want to review them, start getting some ideas of what communication norms might look like. And so, yeah, that's a good idea. I don't know if what that to-do looks like is putting it on the agenda to discuss next time, or having someone take a run at drafting a set of norms? I'm not thinking.
I think I'd like to discuss it more as a group before we drafted norms.
Yeah.
Because it was just one of those moments, I think it kind of grew beyond.
It's a good discussion.
Yeah.
For a retreat.
Or maybe.
Do I have a name for a retreat?
Right, that's true.
Right, so if we are gonna have a WASDA retreat, then maybe that's the place to discuss communication norms, so we can just try to remember to keep that on that agenda.
Okay.
Okay.
I, I, do we wanna add, just to follow up on the depository, like, get, get some, get that info, and then the purchase, well, I think there were some, like, the reports, the. Mainly the follow-up info on the depository.
Okay, should be, thank you.
Yep.
Anything else for the to-dos? Alright, on to item eight B, future agenda topics. Anyone got anything you wanna add? Alright.
Is there anything else? Like, is there anything we're forgetting that we should be considering?
On to item eight C, board meeting debriefed. And now that I've owned the seat of power, and we'll now be called LFA instead of me calling Danielle LFA, I just want to say that I'm proud of supporting the way we're working together. I think today was a good example. I hope you continue to have this sort of flat mindset of shared responsibility and shared support and shared work, along with our administrative team, and I'm really excited for the year ahead. I appreciate visitors for speaking for you, so.
Definitely.
Well done, everybody. Thank you for trusting me to, for having a confidence interval that allows you to vote for me to serve as your president.
I would just say, A, props. I'm gonna continue to keep it under two hours. Right, it's life goals.
We got ten minutes still before we turn.
Um, but also sincerely, this year was a year that nobody could have anticipated for leadership, and I think you did it with grace. And you did it tirelessly, which, given the circumstances that you find yourself in, is a pretty extraordinary thing to have done. So thank you.
Oh, thank you.
And thank you for supporting.
Yeah.
You know, I think we were blessed, truly blessed to have two people who have flexibility within their day. Not that you don't have a lot, but you have flexibility within your day to be able to navigate things. And I also wanna say thank you to the administration, because really, like, this has been a very different kind of board effort. And you guys have been open. And you guys have been open to it and interested in working with us, and we really appreciated it. I know that I don't have as much contact with you guys as I would like, but um you're probably feeling safer than. Um, but truly, like, I love, I love where we're at and where I feel like we're tuned towards something that is cohesive and open and trusting, and I, that is huge. And I work in a district where I don't, that's not, that's gonna, so. You know, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You have had a hell of a year.
We all, everybody has, but um my deep grateful just to have Grace for me, um, trying to, trying to remember that I have not been to the president. Thank y'all.
You might take me a couple meetings.
So you don't always.
I just wanna be the background, you know, supporter and I also really wanna work on mentoring, if I can be of use to that, you know, and like helping to keep guiding um our development as a board. While Carla runs the, you know, day of the delicious snacks, I'd love to like help support board growth and development, so. Thanks for meeting everybody.
I'd like to thank everyone for being so welcoming. Um, you know, one of the things, Michelle, that the public doesn't see is the texts that come. Do you have any questions before the meeting? Is there anything that we can clarify? So um that's, that's been really helpful to know that that's there and just helping me with my technology issues and things, finding things. So thank you just so much. I know that if I'm confused about something, that no question is too silly that, that, you know, you'll answer it and and um be for me, so thank you.
Yeah, like I appreciate some of her, like the support, cause I thought I knew what I was gonna end, getting into, but it it's starting a new job, so no matter how much you prepare, you're not prepared. It's a lot, so I would appreciate the support.
It's a journey.
We're all in this.
All right.
Your first year, so.
I have confidence, I'm sure.
I thought you were leading two.
It's a journey. We got seven minutes before we hit two hours.
Yes.
Oh, God. Item nine A, motion to adjourn. Second, all in favor?
Hi, thank you.